Okay, clock on the wall says it's after 6:30, so let's call to order the July 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Rutland Planning Board. And first order is minutes from July 9th.
Make a motion to accept the July 9th minutes. Second?
Is there any discussion, any additions, deletions, corrections?
Nope.
There are none.
Oh, wait. I did not see anything in there, nothing about Janet not showing up. Okay, Tamika, did you get that? Oh, no, no, we don't need her. Okay.
You know how to get back at Dick, ask him for the presentation to speed.
That's all I felt.
Okay, again, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So would you like us to delay a little bit?
Yeah, she's only a couple of minutes out, so if you don't mind, yeah, sorry about that.
I gotta leave, I have another meeting.
Yeah.
She sent me, so I can.
So she can keep him here.
If you trip him, he gets slower.
What we should go to that is really quick here.
What's the discussion on the CMRPC delegate?
I wasn't sure, the board, we had a discussion, I know Keith said that he's very busy, too busy to participate and be one of the delegates, in particular, in the transportation group of CMRPC. I wasn't sure if the board actually voted to agree to have me added as one of the alternate delegates with the third, with the third delegate or the second alternate that the town's been given. So that's why I put it on the agenda, I don't know if the board actually.
We don't get a third one, it's the select board.
Select board, so I guess I was looking for a planning board recommendation, I don't know if we had done that. Because I didn't see anything in the meeting minutes on that.
I know you brought, it was brought, brought up, I don't know how many minutes ago, meetings.
It was, it was agreed to? Tamika?
She's muted. It muted, Tamika.
Who, what?
You're breaking up a little bit.
There she is.
I'm sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yes, that's right.
Now you can.
I'm sorry, for some reason Zoom keeps kicking me off. Um, yes, at the July 8th meeting, they appointed John as the alternate to CMRPC.
Alright, so that did happen, okay, never mind.
Alright.
Well, that's done then.
That's done.
I think six is pretty easy.
Yeah, no correspondence.
No correspondence, none.
Do you want me to do my planners' report quick?
Yeah, why don't you?
Okay, so I just wanted to lay out the schedule for the fall town meeting in terms of zoning bylaw amendments to give aboard, the board the idea of the, what the schedule's gonna be. As of right now, Tamika's telling me that the prospective date for the fall town meeting, consistent with prior years, is November 21st is the most likely date. Therefore, I'm gonna hold the public hearings on the zoning bylaw amendments on November 5th. That way, if there's a continuation, it gives the board one more meeting on the 19th before town meeting to complete discussion. Therefore, I have talked to Tom Corbett about doing a presentation, informational session on the battery energy storage bylaw. So he would do that on the 29th. So if he could do that right before the public hearings, in that way, not to do it too early so people forget about it by the time we get to town meeting. So that's gonna be the schedule I'm looking at, if that's okay.
October 29th, you said?
October 29th, yeah. So we'll have the informational session and go right into the public hearings at the, at the next meeting, so it's fresh for everybody.
And the only markup I got for you after going through everything, John, I gotta get back to you, is just contain, a containment clause in there, and that's it.
Okay.
Other than that, everything looks good. I've been through it twice, I just gotta get you that red line with the containment added in, and then I'm done.
Excellent. The only other thing I wanted to bring up on my report was, obviously, we were gonna do a site visit over at the Oak Meadow property and.
Guess you guys gotta break out, because I.
Well, it's so funny, when Norm and I spoke, Norm was hesitant to call it off. I kinda talked him into it, and then I found out the next day that it was probably good thing we did, because about 15 minutes in, the skies opened up, so.
And it was probably a mud mess over there, because I was at a job site, it's the reason I couldn't make it, and it was a friggin' mud mess.
So the weather bailed me out a little bit. So, we have, this is one of those months, July and August, where we actually have three weeks before the next meeting, so we have the next two weeks free. So I'm wondering if the 30th or the 6th, which works better for people to reschedule that site walk for Oak Meadow? And Britten, I'm, I'm really, I really wanna work around your schedule the most, since you're the, you're the busiest.
Summer's tough. What's the, what's the, what's the day that we're trying to all meet up?
One of the next Tuesdays, if you could.
So the 30th or the 6th?
Or the 6th, either or.
6th is gonna be best.
Yeah, it might be too.
The 6th? Yeah, 2 seconds.
I don't have anything that afternoon.
I can do that afternoon, but it's gotta be like, towards the end of the afternoon, like, 3:30, 4 o'clock.
Ken, I know Dick and Norm can make it that early, Tim, can you make it that early?
Time?
3:30?
No, I'm just saying, that's, that's, yeah, I can do later than that.
Oh, okay, oh, so if you could do a 6:30?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, never mind then.
Sorry.
I thought you were.
Should've explained better.
Okay, so 6:30 on the 6th, is that good for everybody?
That's good for me.
Okay, great. And that's it for my report.
Janet, you're on.
So I'm here tonight, I'm, would you like me to sit over here?
Anywhere you want.
I'll stand. No, that's okay. I'm Gina Pierce, I'm Executive Director with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And the reason why I'm here tonight is to present our annual service award for 2024 to Dick Williams. As most of you know, Dick has served as a delegate or an alternate to our commission off and on for many years. He's also served on the Transportation Committee, has been very vocal. We know Dick loves, I know, I'm just skipping over that one real quick.
Take that as you will.
But we know how much Dick loves this town. And I've worked with Dick on many projects as Executive Director, and also before I became Executive Director. One of the projects that's near and dear to me is the scenic byways, and it brings everything that, you love Dick, other than the agricultural, that's a whole other project on the rural 11, but the history, and never forgetting the history of Rutland. And you were instrumental along with the late Anita, Anita? No, Helen Viner, I'm sorry, I'm thinking action, and she's not late. The, the late Helen Viner. And this was our first kiosk that we put up down, with the picnic tables down by Long Pond. So that, that started our closer relationship, other than passing in the night, between T-Committee and Executive Committee during that period of time that you weren't on the Executive Committee. And it's, it's just been such a pleasure to work with you on so many projects, between the master plan, the agricultural projects, the shared planner, John, you're here from the Planning Board embracing that, the Rutland Heights, you have, you have been the epitome of a perfect delegate. You've brought Rutland to us and shared with us the needs of Rutland. Sometimes what you thought Rutland needed, maybe what everybody thought Rutland needed, and then we shared what we thought Rutland might need, that you might not agree with either. But, and certainly, you brought back to the town what we had to offer. So I'm gonna miss you, Dick.
I'm missing you guys already.
I thank you, it must be the lovely pizza and the sandwiches that we had on Thursday nights.
Well, that too, but no, I, I just, the personnel that you have down there are fantastic. And you were just talking about the byway, and so, I mean, Addison Redfield comes up too, for Christ sakes, and what a team, I tell you, that was a heck of a team, and I loved it.
Yeah, he served when you weren't, he was in between those terms.
That's right.
Yes.
And Trish, what a job, so very, very pleased about it.
And you've supported us throughout our growth and new ideas, and you've brought them to Rutland like a shared planner with the Community Compact, embracing the regionalization. No, thank you, so if, if I could just, I'm trying not to get emotional here.
Yeah, let's, let's, I'm getting a little.
It's close, so I'm gonna try to get through this. Can I just cut behind you?
How about you go out there, so I grab some pictures?
Alright.
Oh my God, no, we don't need pictures.
Yeah, we do.
So, the service award for 2024 presented to Charles Richard Dick Williams to the town of, and the town of Rutland. In recognition of your decades of outstanding leadership, commitment, and dedicated public service to the town of Rutland, our region, and the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, we have all flourished because of your guidance, enthusiasm, and love of the region. With sincerest appreciation, myself as Executive Director, and Howard Drogner as Chairman. Thank you so much.
Speech?
And I still go home by your house.
Speech? So I may pop in at any time.
Anytime, by all means. Come up to the general store.
Yes.
He would just like the 49 bypass named after him.
Oh, God. I was gonna have a map with that 49 bypass going through it. Right, did I not suggest that?
Trust me, I was trying to get Keith to start remembering Route 49, but unfortunately not.
I'll help you.
This is much prettier than the one I brought at our last meeting, and because you didn't happen to show up, I pulled, I pulled the older one out, well, I've already got it, see, I've got them right here.
What year was that from? Before my time?
Yes, it was before your time.
Hmm, Rich didn't tell me you had received another old, alright, I'm taking it.
It was about 14 years ago, or something like that, I can't remember, 2014. I, it was way back.
Nice, nice, but you stepped back into the role, serving, serving the town again, and, and on our Executive Committee, most recently as Assistant Treasurer as well.
There was a certain gentleman that kept pushing me.
Well, his wife hasn't shot me yet, so I feel good, she's the one that's gonna get me. He's not, he's not quitting until, we got him for, say, two in the math.
Three more years?
20, 22 months, 23 months.
But he's counting, right?
Yeah, no, I can tell you who's counting.
Yes, unfortunately, I am kinda counting. I had to stop fixing a few things nowadays, and I don't like it, so. I play with my tractor all, all the time now, and I love it. I brush hog almost every day this week for three, four hours a day, so I'm having fun.
Sounds to me like a business opportunity to open up.
I have barn swallows that are diving after the bugs that I steer up, and the hawks come in, because I happen to feed the hawks all the, anyways.
You feed them the barn swallows?
Thank you very much, and I tell you one thing, I'll never forget you people, the great work that you do, and please, keep it up. You are fantastic there, and Shadawtha, the best move ever made when you went on transportation. I tell you, that was, you're all over the place now, Washington and all over, but, you know. I, I really appreciate all the work that you do and put in, so, and tell everybody down there, I miss them.
I will, I will. I'll extend it, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
We did it, Dick. So we're gonna miss you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for sharing him with us.
I don't, I, did you give an email?
Tim, I can get you her email.
Or cellphone, because then I can just send them right to you.
No, I have the pictures better for you, because if you want.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's here.
I have a nice box.
You know what, Tim?
Yeah.
Tamika just announced yesterday that we're gonna be starting a monthly newsletter. I'd love to put something about this in the monthly newsletter.
And.
You're going to do it all short, and you pick the ones that you.
Probably will, I'll, I'll see if I can convince the wife to do it.
Sounds to me like you need a man cave with awards in it.
Well, he has time to build one now.
Yeah.
Or I think he has plenty of space out there, he could reclaim.
You've got the shop office you could call yours.
Oh my gosh, thought about you the other day, all of a sudden it comes to deer popping out for crying out loud, and I says, where's Janet? Oh, my word.
We share a lot of similar interests, Dick.
I'll be helping Keith out, because I'm the second delegate to you guys.
Oh, yes, oh, we can read that, Rutland Transportation, okay.
Perfect.
Okay, Janet.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you both, thanks Janet.
That was nice. Did I just say one thing?
Yes.
In order to be a delegate or an alternate in town, you have to reside in.
Oh, so you do have to be a resident, okay. No, I have not moved, so, okay, I can't be a delegate.
Really? I, I hear there are a few houses for sale.
Okay, thank you.
For being built or something, right?
Could build around one, so that is.
That rules me.
That's the only requirement, the first delegate, or the delegate appointed by the Planning Board has to be on the Planning Board.
The second one.
The second only needs to live in town, and the alternate only needs to live in town. Those are the, those are the.
So we need.
Keith is number one, I'll be two.
So are we gonna, so we can't fill the, we're gonna have to think about filling that third delegate?
The Select Board does the.
Okay.
Because they're already appointed.
Appoints the second delegate.
Nope, we get the first and second now.
You get the first, the Select Board gets the second, and they get the alternate.
I thought the Planning Board had two.
Oh, that's, that's, we were under the impression that the Planning Board got two.
No, you get one, you get one, the Select Board gets one. If you continue to grow in the next decade, you'll get a second one, then you would have three. The alternates, they always get the alternate, the Select Board.
Well, they, we, we, they never had a full delegate before, so they just got a full delegate?
Yes, with the, with the 2020 federal census.
So that means I gotta fill out a request and go through the Select Board?
Yes.
Yes.
As either a delegate or an alternate.
They've already done all their appointments, based on, right, Tamika, they're done?
But they can, I'm sure they.
Tim, we can, we can make that work, Tim.
Okay.
Don't, don't worry, we can, we'll figure it out.
I'll dig out my letter for the alternate.
I don't think this is like enrolling in health insurance, where you have to wait a year.
What's that?
I don't think you have to wait a year like health insurance.
No, I got, I got EverSource Health Insurance, I think it's great, 100%, never heard of it since the 70s.
And, and as of the 21st of July, 9,737 is the population of Rutland.
Yep, knocking on 10,000.
Not yet, that's not very far.
Because 10 grand is the charter number.
Wow.
You'll be there before you know it.
Yes.
Thanks Janet, thanks for clarifying that, thank you.
Well, that's a good clarification, we didn't know.
Yeah.
So I'll, because Keith needs to be the guy, I'll leave him with the Planning Board, and I'll do the paperwork for the Select Board appointment for full delegate. It, I mean, there could be somebody else now, be up again, so I don't know that.
But now, she was not indicating that we had a third.
No, that the, there's two.
She did mention the third, she did mention the third, yes, she did mention the third, she said the main delegate has to be on the Planning Board.
When I was getting out of it, she said, don't forget the three. She didn't directly say that there was a third.
Yes, she meant she referred to it in what she just said.
She said we would get another one if our numbers go up.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, that's what I'm thinking, she didn't really indicate that we were.
Yes, no.
We've been told that we were. We've been told, I, she told us, or told me to tell the Planning Board, which I did, when I.
That we had two, right, Dick?
At that time, we had two. And then John had mentioned he wanted to, but then she says, no, you have to be a resident.
Yeah, okay, gonna look into that.
I'll just, I'll just send it in to, Tamika, I'll send it in to you. The request, I'll go home and do it tonight and send it in.
Okie dokie.
Okay, I guess, next order is discussion on active subdivisions, which.
I have plenty.
The thing I can say, I noticed, is we have a Phase 2 of Rettinale Estates.
Yep, you want me to start on Bryce, Brittenel, where do you want me to start?
Whoever you want to start.
So let's start on Bryce. So Phase 3 and 3A, you know, Kevin wrote that letter a while ago, and he's right about that, we gotta get the structures opened up, the catch basins opened up. But we can't do any of that until we finish the piping that comes down the hill, which we're working on now, which will be done by the end of next week.
Is that tying the crossover section?
Into the detention pond, from up above.
Okay. Are you guys gonna have to do more work when you do that, that, is it Phase 4? What's the crossover?
No, Phase 4 goes to the detention pond that's over in Phase 1.
Okay.
So that, that detention pond with the wall is all seeded, the low-flow channel's in, everything's done. All the infiltrators are done, piping's all done, all the way up, starting up the hill. They're working on that now, they've got a little bit of an issue, because some of the residents have built walls right on the edge of the easements, and.
They're coming down.
Well, they're afraid that they're gonna fall down when they're working in there, so I tell you, use a trench box, but they'll, they'll be alright, but by the end of next week, we should do that, and then we'll open up all the catch basins, we'll, we'll raise all the structures. It's, we're also working on the detention pond right now in Phase 1, and we're gonna finish that this season as well, probably by the end of next week, because we've got two, the same crew, same company, but two different crews working in there.
Is there any chance that while you're near, you're, you're gonna clean out the pond?
We just finished cleaning it.
You did?
Yeah, we got all the silt out.
I was kinda hoping while you had a front-end loader in there, you could probably take a couple bucketloads of crusher run to, just to make a, on the trail?
We're gonna, there's gonna be an outflow on that side.
On that side, it's gonna be the outflow, so you can't have, where the trail comes around it and goes down?
Yeah, it'll be, I think it's in that area, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, I thought it was too steep, and somebody had mentioned that, you know.
Not bad.
Oh, it wasn't, okay.
Not too bad.
Alright.
So that'll all be done, so by the, you know, let's say detention pond 1 gets done by the first week in August. Now, so it's our intention to, you know, top that, put all the bounds in, trees, and get the as-bills and the street acceptance plans, and whether or not that all gets done in enough time for you guys to get it on the fall town meeting, I don't know, it's kind of up in the air right now, but it'll definitely be ready for spring, if not, fall.
Can I ask about, in, I think Phase 4 is when it comes out on 122A, correct?
Uh, Phase 3.
3. The, the depressions and potholes and stuff that look like they were getting, what's the word, I'm looking, where subsurface was disappearing, and then they were dropping out, has that been cleaned up and fixed, or is that gonna be part of this?
Once we open up the catch basins.
Okay.
Yeah, because when you have a, if you don't have any berm, you have the crown of the road, the water hits the crown of the road, runs to the side, tears the side apart.
Yep, 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 yep.
Gets underneath, we gotta, we gotta, you gotta get those open, it's been too long.
That's a cleanup when you're gonna do it, okay, I'm good with that.
Once we open up the catch basins, that'll, that'll.
I just, there were some large holes in there, and I figured the residents weren't, would have yelled at you before I did, so.
No, they haven't yet.
John, John sent it to Kevin, and Kevin went over and looked at it, and I think he sent you a letter and stuff, so.
So then, we've, we've already received the footings and the headwalls and the arches for the Phase 4 crossing. I don't know whether you heard, I did copy John on the emails that went back and forth, I don't know if he told you, but the 401 water quality cert expired, but there's no explanation in the water quality cert, there's no expiration date, nothing, but they told me it's tied to the construction general permit, which is part of an Army Corps permit, that it, that renews itself like every so many years with the Army Corps, so when that expired, we had one year from that time. If I had known that, I would've got that in ahead of time. But in the meantime, the superseding order of conditions expired. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna file with the CONCOM, hopefully this week, for a new order of conditions for just Phase 4 and 5. The replication areas are building, you know, are growing well, so we're gonna have Phase 1, 2, and 3, we're gonna put in for a certificate of compliance with DEP, because it was a superseding order ahead of time. Hopefully, all of that gets done, I talked to Judy today, she's gonna, Judy from the DEP, she's gonna try to flip that around as fast as we could, because I said to her, I said, how would I know that? She says, well, your consultant's supposed to know. I, I said, how the hell, you know, I mean, if, how, how would I know it's tied to the construction general permit? Chris Lucas actually did know that, he didn't tell me that.
Who?
Chris Lucas, Mike, he, he does a lot of my stuff.
Interesting.
You know?
Yeah, he's my project manager, EverSource.
He, he, oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow, yeah, so he did, you know, he, he does that stuff for us, Lucas Environmental, and he, he writes all the stuff up on the, on the replication areas and things like that. He's pretty well-known in the DEP circles and stuff like that. So, well, we hope to start Phase 4 by August 12th, because we wanna get that crossing done before it gets, starts raining in the fall, otherwise, it's gonna be a nightmare. And I know everybody's kinda anxious to get those two, that's gonna connect those two pieces of road. So that, that's pretty much where that stands. Phase 1C, which is Lindsay Lane now, it used to be Lemon Circle, where every house is sold in that, and I mean, some of the houses that are in there are sold, and over 800,000, I mean, big houses in there. I mean, I don't know if you seen, they're going up like crazy, I mean, it's really a beautiful spot. What's been cleaned up, big mess.
Right after I win the lottery.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, $800,000 in Rutland.
Way stronger than that, to be honest with you. So that, that's pretty much it for Bryce Estates, I mean, you know, we're just trying to get Phase 3 accepted, but we're getting started on Phase 4, and we're finishing up the detention pond in Phase 1. So we're closing in on that, and right now, we're certainly not having any problems, so. So that, that's pretty much it, you guys got any questions on Bryce, or are you satisfied with that? So Brittenel, we're finishing the detention pond at Quail, that's the last part of it, it's paved. I don't know if you've been in there, but boy, it's really pretty back there, there's some beautiful lots back there. And hopefully, by late fall or early spring, we're gonna start the road acceptance on Grizzly Drive. We finally, we had one lot left that we hadn't sold yet, we sold that a little bit ago, so that's working well. Arrowhead, we raised all the structures.
Before you finish out Grizzly?
Yeah.
Whatever you guys can do to get those crossings finished, you know, structurally finished?
They're done, but you need, they need guardrails and fence, right?
I thought they had.
I, I think there's still another layer of blocks.
Yeah, it seems like.
It looks like it on the far crossing, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe, maybe not.
There's still blocks there, so, but they're not top blocks, so I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check.
Because that just seems awful low.
Yeah.
Even for a guardrail, if you put a guardrail there, I thought, I thought there was gonna be blocks, you know, two or three feet high, and then a guardrail inside of that.
There is gonna be a guardrail inside.
Because right now, literally, it just curves up like where the water can go down, and, and that's it, and I'm going like, it's a ramp to me for a car.
Don't drink.
Owen's gone off, yeah, don't drink.
No, 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 but there's a whole bunch of blocks at the end that I thought was the finishing top blocks.
I'm gonna check on that.
But that's, I forget who the engineer was.
Mike Maroney?
Yeah. Because we would be looking for Mike's final report, because.
He, he already did it, we submitted that.
He can't, because if it's not finished, he can't, he's gotta do a final.
The structural part of it's done, those blocks on top aren't really structural, unless, I'll, I'll ask him, but I mean, I, I submitted them.
Okay.
I submitted all that stuff to Dave a long time ago, January 17th.
Okay, we need to get that in our file, because I don't remember seeing that coming to us, or maybe a.
Pictures, I mean, there's a thousand pictures. I, I, I think I still, I'm, I'm sure I still have it.
Okay, maybe it's in there, and I just missed it, it's, it could be my mistake.
Arrowhead, working towards street acceptance, we got all the structures raised, sidewalks are all graded, sides are all done up to the sidewalks, grass is growing in a lot of areas up there. All the, the area where that easement that used to be Helly's driveway, that's all owned and seeded now. So that's, that place is completely just about ready for a top coat, bounds and trees. That. That should make it to the town meeting in the fall, but again, if it doesn't, I'm not rushing anything to, you know, save us.
Plan, Cle, for that huge dirt pile there, I know that's filled for sun, but
Where?
When you come around Arrowhead.
When's the last time you were up there?
This weekend. It looked like
Oh, that's on Lot Four, you mean?
Yeah.
We're gonna pull that out.
Okay, that's it.
That house is sold, we just have, we just gotta start.
Cleaned it out, okay.
And I wanted to just get up back with you on Noble Hill. I know you guys were interested in that before.
Before you get off
Arrowhead, yeah?
No, Britnell Estates. And maybe this is for a later conversation, the pump station, is that Bear Hill, or is that?
That is already accepted.
Yeah.
But it's Bear Hill.
Okay.
But it works for Grizzly and it's gonna be working for Hilltop as well.
Okay. I don't know, is that something, do we talk about that now, or is that something?
I don't think it'd be a bad idea to bring it up.
Yeah, there's
I believe you were indicating that we're gonna do water and sewer all the way up Hilltop.
For Hilltop, yeah.
And that it would be town water and sewer.
Yes.
Uh-uh. Chris has come back and said they want it private.
Oh, good. Joe's the one who wanted it public.
Yeah, and I agree with Joe, but
Yeah, I mean, I don't care, doesn't matter.
The problem is, we don't know how
The stuff that's in the street is already public, like in Britnell Drive, that's gonna be, that, because this town owns it. So you can't, that, once I put that in, town owns it.
But do you, what do you have done from the pump station right now?
Just through the easement. Just, it's across, the sewer's across Britnell Drive and the water's on the, on the side of Bear Hill.
Is that accepted by the town?
Yeah, they expected it, sure.
Well, that makes things easier than norm for us. I just didn't know if Chris, I wonder if Chris knows that, because that was under Joe's watch, I think, when that was done.
Yeah, he's the one who told me, you know, he wanted to have easements.
It makes our life a little bit easier, because then they're going into a public.
Yeah.
I just don't know how that works, that's the
Well, we've got a question out to legal.
Legal, see if we can do that.
See.
Okay.
Because if it's installed in the public roadway, we're not sure if we can have the developer be responsible for maintaining something.
Developers, it would be the homeowners association anyway.
Well, that's the other thing, is we don't know if that's, if we can do that.
But if it's, if it's public up to Britnell, up to basically the entrance of Hilltop, then it's a moot point, because then you're just gonna be putting it, you would be putting in private from Hilltop entrance up to the houses and tying into a public.
But no, I don't think that was the issue, Tim. The issue was Chris wanted everything to be the homeowners association from there to the pump station.
Can't if it's been accepted by the town already.
No, but what he, so is there anything new that's gonna be installed for Hilltop? That's the thing, whatever's put into Hilltop.
The part of the sewer line on Britnell Drive to be private.
I don't think you can.
No, that's, and again, I'd rather wait until we hear from town council on this before we get too worked up, because
So here's the thing, if you charge for the utility, for example, if they charge for the water, anything on their lots is private anyway.
No, 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 we're not, we're getting things confused here. We're not talking about anything within where the roadway's gonna be for Hilltop Estates.
It's just the roadway is what we're worried about.
We're talking, we're talking about, Chris came back and said that he would like to see everything. We're not talking about inside the subdivision. That's homeowners association, obviously. Chris wants to extend the homeowners association responsibility from the end of Grizzly, Norm? That that would be the end of Grizzly, to the pump station.
Yeah, I don't
That's already been publicly accepted. That's why I didn't, I didn't really wanna bring this up now, because I wanted to hear from town council first, because it may be a moot point. We may not even had to have that discussion.
Because once you put it in the street, the town owns it.
I think so too, so. I think you're probably right, but again, I put this out to town council, I wanna wait for town council.
Okay.
But we're gonna have to give you a heads up, Cle, on what type of sewer, is it public or is it private? Because I don't, obviously I could tell by your reaction, you didn't, you hadn't heard the request for private before.
Private sewer?
For Hilltop.
I don't know, but what, what are you talking about? Just the maintenance of it?
Yes, the maintenance of it.
Because we've already got approval, we got approval from Joe to put it in, and he wanted an easement. So the town could, could take care of it. That's what Joe wanted, and that's what, that's how it was accepted.
So let's, let's take this one time, let's wait to
Into Hilltop?
Oh.
Joe, Joe asked me specifically to put easements.
So, hold on, you know what?
That's what I kinda thought.
Honestly, I wanna put this on an agenda to talk about, because this is getting very confusing. There's a breakdown in communication between the two different DPW directors.
Yeah.
Past and current, and let me, let's, let's wait to hear from town council on that other part of it. But I'd love to put this on the next agenda and get Chris in here.
And I want Cle here too.
Cle, yes, obviously Cle will be here.
I want you here too, so.
Well, you're gonna be here for the A and R on the thirteenth anyway.
Yes.
Okay, good enough.
So let's, let's do that.
You know, all the other towns now are using that plastic water pipe. And I asked Chris about it and he said, "No, I don't wanna use it." But it's, it's way cheaper than, than the other, and it's not, you don't have to, you know, take care of it like you have to take care of ductile iron. I don't know, it's just, to me, if I'm gonna be private, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put plastic water. I mean, it makes way more sense and it's, I mean, that stuff, ductile iron's thirty to forty, forty dollars a foot now, eight inch ductile iron. Forty dollars a foot.
You gotta worry about cathodic protection, all kinds of crap with iron too. With plastic, you have no cathodic protection at all.
He said no, I asked him.
So Tim, I'll put that on the next
Yeah, let's put that on there, because
Let's have this discussion at the next meeting with Chris here, because we're starting to go back and forth, you know, us, me, town council, Chris, we need to get everyone in the same room. And by then, I'll have an answer from town council on another part, and I have a feeling it's probably gonna be a moot point as far as the other part, because once something's in the public roadway, I don't think you can put that on a private developer necessarily.
Can't.
Or an HOA.
From what I've heard, you can. Alright, so moving on Noble Hill, we filed the sewer extension permit and Chris signed it. So we've got the sewer extension permit in place now. We're gonna be filing with Concom. We wanted to wait till it dried out a little bit, you know, so it's been dry the last few weeks, two or three weeks here, so we're gonna file with Concom soon, so we hope to get started in there in twenty twenty-five.
Is water too?
Water, they're right by there.
Okay. Alright.
So that's all of my active stuff.
Absolutely. There's one more thing on Hilltop that I will not let it die, and that's homeowners agreement.
Yeah.
Home, I
But what, but we're still, we haven't, yeah, I haven't even talked to Cle about, about our comments yet, so.
Well, I'm still gonna bring it up anyway.
But we don't have anything in front of us, keep that in mind, so.
I know. Okay, in the homeowners agreement, each homeowner is gonna be responsible for one ninth of whatever the contribution is into the homeowners trust.
Yes.
Yes, okay. But there's also a clause in there that if two or more of those lots are combined, they will be considered one lot. What does that do to the one ninth? It's not clear, because now there aren't nine
It's two nines. Because there's nine lots right now.
It's only considered, it states right in the thing, that if two lots are combined, they are considered one lot.
Okay, but that's still
Now, now, now there's only eight lots.
So everyone have to contribute a little bit more, right?
It would be
It's not stated that way.
Is that what it says in the homeowners association? Because I didn't
Well, no, here's, here's, hold on, this, and this is why, we don't have this in front of us, this is why they don't wanna go too deep into this. What it states is that the, the, the project has the ability going forward to potentially combine lots. So Norm was wondering what, what that does to the calculation, where it'd be, everyone would contribute one ninth now. If two lots get combined, it comes down to eight lots, and I think what we had said is, then everyone, just, every homeowner pitches pitches in a little bit more, because now it's eight lots instead of nine.
Yeah, I didn't like that.
Not once they sign a deed and it's on their deed.
Okay.
That homeowners association is on record.
So
And they're tied to that.
So Norm, why, actually, again, don't have anything in front of us, this wasn't on the agenda, so I would like to have this discussion, not here, so
I'm gonna say this, just as a matter of course, first of all, I'm not combining lots, anyway.
Alright, so you know what? Let's put this on the agenda for the thirteenth and we can discuss the HOA.
Thousand dollar house, two eight hundred thousand dollar houses.
Over there, they're starting at nine.
Okay, so, yeah, let's, let's discuss this on the thirteenth.
I've gotta have a clarification on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
We can just take that whole clause out, everybody splits it equally. That's the way it should be.
Maybe, you know, maybe change the language like that.
Okay, so, yeah, let's put it on the agenda for the thirteenth.
I'm here on the thirteenth. Okay. That's it for me.
Anything else?
Anybody else for Cle?
Nice to see you guys again. Congratulations, Dick. That's a hell of an award.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Bye, guys. Good evening. Okay.
Cle, just get that check on the A and R, please.
Yeah, I told Karen to drop it off, she didn't.
Thank you.
The last victim.
I'll have a sign review for High Park Farm in Hill Street. And we do have a, at least a sketch of the sign. So, you have anything to leave for?
Pretty straightforward, I'm not sure if you've driven by, finally getting some landscaping done on the outside, starting to look a lot better. There is a conduit that's coming up out of the ground, we had an electrical conduit run out there so we could put lights on the sign.
That's one thing that wasn't made clear on this rendering, so what type of illumination are we talking about? External, lights directed at it from the ground?
I'm thinking more down, because if we put them on the ground in the wintertime when the snow builds up, the lights won't get through the snow.
So mounted on the sign, coming back down towards the sign.
So there's an angle towards the sign.
Exactly, yeah.
Perfect, I'm fine with that. There, so my streetlight thing goes away, because now it's, there's no illumination to these stars.
But the dimensions of this sign fall within the, they don't exceed the limitations of the zoning district.
I'm pretty sure the limit on the bylaw is thirty-two square feet.
Yep, and ten feet high, it's not gonna be more than ten feet high. And I think it's a nice looking sign personally.
Yeah, that's our logo.
I kinda thought it, it looked awful big completely, because that guy's standing right next to it.
Guy's not six feet tall.
No, he's, he's more like five, five foot two, he's, he's like principally Joel.
I'm doing the, yeah.
So the conduit's in the ground there, if you wanted to see it in the measurements, I think, I'm not sure if you got the next page there. The measurements are where it kinda went off of the conduit, because that's where the leg of the sign is gonna be. And that way the power can run up the side of it.
Is the lights gonna be on twenty, are they gonna be like on a timer, so they come on at night?
There is a timer in the building. Electrician, when you wire the place, put a timer on it.
Okay.
And I like that the lights will be directed down and not up, so a little bit, the difference be a little bit less distracting.
I agree, yep. Are these the colors of the sign?
It is, yes. The post, it's gonna be pressure treated wood, so it's gonna start its life as a pressure treated lumber, and then eventually something will look like that.
But the sign, those are the colors?
That is the colors of the sign, yeah.
I think we've been, you've been in communication with Tamika about potentially doing a grand opening one night.
Yep, yep, she reached out to us, so we're gonna
That's great.
We'll get going on that. We've got our general manager, he's all hired, ready to go, we just gotta get through all the permitting through the state.
How's that going?
Uh, we'll see. We just gotta dot all the i's and cross all the t's and
I have no, I have no concerns.
I don't, I think
I think it's gonna be a nice addition to that area, I really do. Because the board's been talking about, you know, making our corridors look nice and signage is part of that, and I think this is gonna be a really nice addition. And it's gonna, it's gonna help go in that direction.
Try to tell the pizza guys to expand, because after they're done with the little gummies, they're gonna go eat some food. Since we don't have a Taco Bell in town, I gotta get a pizza joint.
Norm, what'd you ask about what the lights are gonna look like?
Yeah.
So what, what are the lights, he wants to know what the lights are gonna look like?
I mean, the picture, like a, kind of like a curved, it's a little more curved light, like the stem being curved angled to it.
Almost like a gooseneck coming
Yeah, kinda, I've got some pictures I could email to you, so we kinda photoshopped, so you know, back
Yeah, if you'd like to, that'd be great, I mean, it's not necessary, but that'd be great, and I could share them with the board.
Yeah, it's just kind of a gooseneck looking, it'd be great.
There's one thing though that really puzzles me, I can't see it on this picture here. But on that barn, does it say the Rutland, the right to farm community?
Unfortunately cannabis is not a right to farm crop.
Wait a minute, across the street it is.
You say give it time.
Yeah.
They ever open up across the street.
Is there, a quick question, so we need to decorate the inside of this building? And we're, I had the thought of using a local barn or something, maybe get a picture, do you know any farmers that got a barn or something that looks nice that we can? You know, we're kinda going for the farm look and not the downtown Boston look, we wanna go that route. So rather than just pulling a random barn or silo off of the internet, I didn't know if there was any ideas of somebody in in town that wouldn't mind having the picture of their farm on the wall in the dispensary.
It's not a bad idea. Maybe they have a better picture than what the farm is right at the moment, and that's the Johnsons on, and Haynes on Glenwood Road.
Oh yeah, that's a nice one. That's a really nice one.
That's Bobby Haynes is right across from the barn, and a little bit further right by Wheeler Road is George and Gail, Gail Haynes is the original, but Johnson was their name. And maybe they have pictures.
Okay. We've kinda, on the inside of it, we kinda made some like real wood looking counters, and we did like a metal, look like a, you know, kinda give it the bomb.
And that's a great idea, and we appreciate that, because one thing we've been trying to focus on is promoting local businesses and working with the EDC, that's one thing we're gonna be working on, is promoting other local businesses, so I think that's great that you're doing that.
Yeah, sure. But think about, so we're gonna get that
This way also, did you know that wood silos, I've gotta hesitate here, because I can't remember what the hell they call it. Down south, trees that are growing in the swamps and all that.
Cypress.
Cypress. Silos are made out of cypress wood. So that, that silo, they have one concrete silo and they have one wood silo. And the silo over that, where I brought up, was cypress wood, and I was amazed.
That had been expensive, because there's none of that up here.
That's right.
It'll be brought up from the south.
It won't rot?
No, 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 no.
It's not gonna rot.
Interesting, yeah. So anyways.
It's like that IPE stuff out of Brazil, it's into freaking destructible. Expensive as hell.
Old wooden greenhouses, the framing was all cypress wood. As far as people, it would not rot.
Because teak's not natural to the US, so cypress is, all down south, yeah.
Okay, so we agree with no, no
All set.
Yep. Do we need to sign anything, or just
No, it's not even an approval, just a review, and, I mean, he agreed to just send renderings of what the lights will look, look like, and I'll send that to the board. But other than that, the board doesn't have to approve anything, so we just, just send the person away with your blessings.
Send a notice to the building inspector.
What's that?
We'll send the notice to the building inspector.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, I'll have to get a permit for this, because this
Well, the thing is, I will sign off on that anyway.
Okay.
For a signed permit, because that'll be on our online permitting.
Okay.
So, I will, I'll send him that notification tomorrow.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, take care.
Okay, our next agenda item is
Number eight.
Number eight, any discussion not reasonably anticipated?
Okay, because he was here. Across the street, I want that special permit rescinded immediately on that growing marijuana.
Out of curiosity, why?
Because we were never invited in August, almost two years ago, it seems like.
I don't think they're in the business yet, though.
They're not.
They're not.
And that's why we were supposed to go there to observe that facility, the planning board, because we went through it all
My time, I don't know what we're talking about.
We went through it originally.
Well, yeah, yeah.
And we signed off on a special permit.
Some of the most impressive plans.
And they said, "We will bring you back in when we're ready."
Oh, yeah.
And they said that was gonna be around August.
Well, I think these things, these two establishments are taking longer than they thought.
Developers and say, "Please build to these."
Here's the new standard, yeah.
Well, you know, it might not work to
I can reach out.
Just reach out to them and say, you know, hey, when do you
Because didn't they just, John, on Monday have a liquid propane
I don't
For the generator.
I know the building commissioner was asking me about the HVAC, they're gonna be doing an inspection on that soon, so
Okay.
I was just gonna provide an update.
I was just gonna provide an update, um, Tim.
Yeah, Tamika.
Tamika. Yeah, that, so the propane was actually for, uh, Saveway, for the new Coffee Land, um, restaurant that opened up. Um, but I recently.
Three thousand gallon, three one thousand gallon tanks.
Okay.
Yes, so I just spoke to, um, that company, uh, Mastery Holdings last week. And they had some construction setbacks due to issues in the building, but they are just about up and running. But they're kind of at the same place that High Hawk is, where they're working through the state's permitting process. Um, the town did what they needed to do as far as, um, on like the host community agreement side. So they're just kinda being held up by the permitting at this point, but they're just about there, and they do remember that we wanna go in and cause I mentioned it, and they said that they will absolutely extend the invitation.
Oh, good.
So there you go.
Alright, good, thank you, Tamika.
Cause that, that, I mean, it was impressive.
Yes.
The drawings that they had, the layout, um, they, they had details of, of, of different sections.
Wait, what's that?
Oh, you don't, don't even get me started, I was excited, I'm looking, they had a whole detail page of, of individual portions of the building, I was just like.
So this is for a greenhouse type situation?
It's grow and manufacture, basically.
Yes.
And then they had a, uh, a distribution, basically, when I say distribution, they had the facility so they could load it into trucks. And then they had a whole backup system, and it was basically complete automation, their whole staff was gonna be like four to five people, no building. And that's, so what she's saying is that they're still moving forward, we just don't.
Yeah.
Yeah. They have basically a control room where security and the control sits, and that's pretty much it.
And.
Yeah, limited act, it was, I mean, it was impressive, I just was like, wow. Sims would be like, man, we could have built a lot of tractor.
Okay, I have one more, and then I'll shut my mouth. Uh, just to let you know, I have, I don't know how many times I have asked the select board how full is our sewer line at, at the metering station? How many times, and I know that Joe had, had comments about it, well, I sent an email to Christ today.